Can you please call the roll?
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Andy Selhert.
Sir.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Belvair.
Is absent excuse this evening?
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Barbara Politzky.
Here.
Ryan Van Kirk.
Here.
Would you please sit and join in the pledge of allegiance? And after the pledge of allegiance, please remain sitting for a moment of silence as requested by Councilwoman Meg Ryan Shaki.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Thank you. We begin this evening with approval of minutes date of November 26, 2018. Any comments or questions?
Motion approved.
To approve, Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhert?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barbara Politzky?
Yes.
Ryan Van Kirk?
Yes.
Just as a quick reminder, this is the last scheduled council meeting for 2018. That is, of course, unless something else comes up, but this would be our last regularly scheduled meeting for 2018. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor. She has a couple of presentations that she'd like to make.
Thank you, Council President. Chief Milkie, would you mind joining me? So, as many of you know, three years ago, we started a couple of things in the city. One of these things is recognizing an employee that really went above and beyond for the year. So, today, my first proclamation is to recognize Marie Naff. Marie is a jailer in our police department. Marie, you want to come up? She's 2018's Employee of the Year. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Marie. She started in October 5, 2015. She doesn't know, so she's surprised and she's about to cry, so she's about to make me cry. She's responsible for the care and custody of inmates, which includes a supervision, booking, providing food and medication, laundry, and evaluations to all of our jailers. Bray has provided resources and been of great value through listening and offering words of advice to those who have found themselves in difficult situations and has made an impact on the lives of many. Marie's an American Red Cross certified CPR and first aid, along with Narcan and psychiatric training. She starts every shift by making sure all aspects of the police department are clean and ready for use. She takes great pride in all aspects of her work and always remains positive and willing to go an extra mile to help all of her coworkers and run the shift smoothly. She shows great respect for all of her coworkers and remembering a special occasion of all of their lives. And so, on behalf of myself, city council, and all of Brooklyn, I want to recognize you as the Employee of the Year. And congratulations and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
I just want to let everybody know how lucky the city of Brooklyn is to have Marie as our corrections officer at night shift. She's at night. Nobody really sees her an awful lot, but it's rare when you let a prisoner go out of jail and they stop at the chief's office to tell you how great the jailer was that night and how they felt really well-treated. You don't get that very often. The city of Brook Park fought us to take her away from them. They actually called her later and called me later to see what they could do to bring her back. So, she goes over and beyond every day she works and she's a very kind heart. So...
This is very humbling for me on very many issues. My mom always taught me to take responsibility for myself and always be responsible and leave things better than they were when I got there. And four years ago, I remember, I dropped a jar of spaghetti sauce and that was going to be the dinner for my kids for the next two weeks. I had no money. We were living paycheck to paycheck. This job has been nothing but a godsend. This job has meant that whenever I see a mom that's struggling like I was, I could kind of give her a little bit of a gift card without her knowing, because moms are proud too and they don't want to ask for help. This job has really opened so many doors for me and I'm truly appreciative and Chief Milkie is not lying. He went to my supervisors before he even went to me to tell them they were going to take me. And I remember I was a little bit torn because I had very close ties in Brook Park as well. But I'm glad I made the move and I work with the best people in the world. My supervisors, my police officers, I just love them. I can't explain enough, they're the real heroes here. They really put themselves out there and for me to make a cup of coffee is no big deal. If they want me to clean bathrooms, I have no problem with it, because they're the ones going out in those floods whenever it floods and they're the ones that are helping families that are in turmoil and horrible situations and I take my hat off to all of them. So, thank you, everybody, for coming out here to see me tonight and I appreciate it. Thanks, Mom.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. I think her words speak for itself why she's definitely Employee of the Year. Thanks, Marie. So, my next proclamation is for Brooklyn Citizen of the Year. And this isn't a surprise. Mary Copeland, come on up. Mary, the friend to all, you guys probably all know Mary. She is a lifelong resident who graciously gives her time and goes above and beyond for the students of Brooklyn, always volunteering and advocating for them, an important part of the community. She's an active member of the Music Boosters, helping with the marching band during football games, sewing and repairing band uniforms, supporting the high school musicals, and working the refreshment stands. She is an active member of the Brooklyn Boosters, working at the concession stands, organizing senior fireworks nights, helping at various luncheons and dinners. She's an active member of the Brooklyn Post Prom Committee, organizing and volunteering at fundraisers such as Breakfast with Santa and Easter Bunny. She's a member of our Support Our Schools Committee, working tirelessly, going door-to-door, making phone calls, organizing the spaghetti dinners. She's been an active member of the PTA for years, active with her son's Boy Scout troops by marching in the Memorial Day parades, and has been active in numerous events with her daughter attending Brooklyn High School. Mary was also a team coordinator and participated for the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life event for several years. She's truly a wonderful volunteer and she's always a step up to help pitch in. She does work full-time too, with all that stuff. So, on behalf of the city of Brooklyn, myself and city council, thank you for all of you doing, congratulations on being Employee of the Year.
Thank you so much. I would like to thank Mayor Katie Gallagher as well as city council. I'm so excited and honored to receive this. I have been volunteering forever and it means the world to me. I've loved every minute of it. It is all fun, from being early childhood PTA president, middle school, high school PTA president, elementary PTA president, band president, all of it. I've loved every minute of it and I appreciate this and I think it's wonderful, a wonderful thing to do and to nominate people for these. And I'm so thankful and blessed and grateful for this, 100%. And a contour of Spring Musical and everything else that we do, we need all of your help. So, thank you so much, everyone, and thank you to my work family and my family and my Brooklyn family. I love the city of Brooklyn. I love volunteering and sewing with the other moms for the marching band uniforms and all of it. It makes us so happy to be able to help these kids and give them a good life. So, thank you for everything.
Very good. Thank you, ladies, and congratulations to both of you on a job well done. Appreciate that. At this time, we will have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
My name's Dawn Neal, 4087 Apple Creek Drive. I would like to thank Mary or congratulate Mary and Marie for the Citizens of the Year and Employee of the Year. But what I'm here to talk about tonight is concerns about two ordinance on the agenda. I've already expressed my concerns at the finance meeting, but I want to put it publicly. This is very hard for me to do because I'm afraid when I talk about the concerns within these ordinance, I may receive some type of bullying or retaliation from people within that organization. It's my fear that they may do something to me personally or professionally. And my fear, and then this is a fear of many residents and why they won't speak out, but this is a situation we have to deal with nowadays. But I won't allow my fear to silence my voice as a concerned residence, and none of us should. So, I spoke to many of my family, friends, and residents of Brooklyn and Cleveland about this. So, I'm going to read what my concerns are. About ordinance 2018-92, this has been corrected. I have emailed all of council. Mr. Van Kirk has already corrected the error, but they wanted to give Cleveland residents the same rate as Brooklyn residents for the use of our facilities. Let me correct that. Brooklyn Acres, Cleveland residents, the same rate as us Brooklyn residents. They have now changed it to community partner, paying the same as Lindell Parma Heights and Parma. And then, issue number, or ordinance number 93, states Brooklyn Acres allow all Brooklyn residents to use their community room free of charge. I wanted to strike that and say that's not true. I called on Friday, December 7th, was told that I have to live in Brooklyn Acres or know someone who lives in Brooklyn Acres to use the facility. So, again, within this ordinance, something that is not true. States Brooklyn Acres conducts food giveaways to anyone in need in the area. Well, this is true. They just opened it up to everyone in need for the past month or so. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. They use this to only provide food, used to only provide food giveaways to Brooklyn Acres residents in need, but they have also helped out Christ Cupboard Mike. He's had surgery and had some illness, and so they've taken over the program a little bit for him. So, I don't want them to get 100% full credit for this. This is something Mike had started and they are helping Mike out. I want that to be known. But there are also other churches and organizations within the city who also provide these services to our residents. States Brooklyn Acres provides Brooklyn police officers with food to be given to residents they encounter who need assistance. This has happened one time in seven years. So, why is this even standing on an ordinance when it's happened one time? My same concern is about on number 92, where states are getting Cleveland residents are getting the same rate as Brooklyn residents. I'm not sure that that has been addressed. A senior center, the senior, another one. A senior from any city can come and utilize our senior facility. I feel that this is enough to offer. The city of Brooklyn provides a service to all without any increase of fee of charge for lunches or activities for the resident or not. I know one of the concerns is them using our transportation. I do believe Ms. Pucci has addressed that, so they will not get the free use of our transportation services, from my understanding, but I want to make sure that that's put in there, that they don't get to use our seniors' transportation services. They do want to have the same benefit of paying the resident rate of the car that they use at the senior center. So, my biggest questions are, and I expressed to city council, are as why is this even on the table? I learned in the past that they have allowed Brooklyn Acres children to join at a resident rate, but why all of a sudden is it just the Brooklyn Acres Cleveland residents? Why is it priced at the resident rate, which again, has been addressed in issue number 90, or ordinance number 92? Why is it just Brooklyn Acres Cleveland residents? Why only these 340 families in Cleveland? Why not the Tremor, Ira, Archmere, North Cliff, Delora, or any other street that splits these two cities? Those streets have Cleveland residents and their neighbors are Brooklyn residents. Those families may have children who play together and are friends and would benefit from the same allowance we are giving Brooklyn Acres residents. Why not allow all of Brooklyn? Then we can allow Tremont or Ohio City. Where is the cutoff point for the city of Cleveland to come in? I have expressed this concern with our law director. How do we legally invite only part of the city of Cleveland to join and not the whole city? We allow the whole city of Parma and Parma Heights and Lindell, but we charge on the community partner rate, not the resident rate. My friend lives on West 57 in Cleveland. Our kids play together. Can her family get the discounted rate since our kids are friends and she lives in Cleveland? What about my mom and dad who live 500 feet from Brooklyn Acres Cleveland residents? Do they get a discounted rate? They helped me out. I'm a Brooklyn resident. They're very close proximity to Brooklyn Acres Cleveland side, so why not them? How about my friends in Cleveland who volunteer and attend St. Thomas More? Are my friends who do the same volunteering community outreach at Cleveland Baptist Church but live in Cleveland, can they get the discounted resident rate? Both these churches do a lot for our community in Brooklyn, and why aren't they getting the members at the discounted rate? I can go on and on to examples why this is not fair nor equal. To allow a very small portion of a very large city to join a recreation center at a resident rate or even a discounted rate for that matter, reap the benefits our seniors have is not acceptable, period. Thank you for the time and I hope you will reconsider allowing this bias ordinance to pass. Thank you.
My name is Rob Slattery, 4396 West 62nd. The only reason I came here today is I was called over the weekend by Kathy Pucci to make me aware there was proposed legislation on this ballot, or on the agenda tonight. In March, I put a request in to the mayor about, I'm not sure, I think it originally went to the senior center, then ended up with the mayor, about three key fobs for three senior citizens on the Cleveland side. Now, I've never met you. I've never spoken to you. And for you to get up here and...
Mr. Slattery, where can I address people in the audience? It needs to be directed to the council member.
She got up here and acted like she was public enemy number one and I was the danger.
You needed to address the council, not me.
Okay, I have a problem with an employee of the city getting up here. Okay, well, then I have a problem with it in general, being allowed. No one can get up here and make negative comments about people up on the dials.
That's not true. They do it all the time.
You guys stop it all the time. I've been to council meetings. I'm not going to get up here and try to protest everything she said. Mike Bonarski, however you say his last name, contacted me, asked for help. He's having health issues. I stepped up. We started a food pantry four years ago with the city of Brooklyn. I offered the city of Brooklyn 500 bags of groceries last year, was turned down, said they didn't need it. I'm not going to sit here and defend myself because I did nothing wrong. If this administration wants to say no, say no. I'm here, and the only reason, because she told me about this. Now, there's dual legislation proposed here, okay? I understand you proposed one. I've never spoken to you about this subject. No one from this administration has called me or emailed me since last March, when it was said, "There's legal issues we need to look into. We'll get back to you." Kathy Pucci is the only one I've spoken to, and I've spoken to her more in the last six months than I have in the last six years. And I think it's ridiculous that somebody's going to act like they're in danger, that harm is going to come your way. I've never met her. I know of her. I've heard how she's talked nasty and called residents liars before. I looked into that situation and that was addressed allegedly through the administration and discipline. That's the only thing I've ever dealt with this lady.
Listen, Mr. Slattery, please address your comments in council. Please leave Ms...
Did she just say something?
And she's not allowed to speak out either, right? And I just said my...
All right, here, it breaks down to this. I fight for the both sides of the community, Brooklyn and the Cleveland side of the Acres. I fight for the city of Brooklyn. I do a ton of things. I drop hundreds of pounds of food to the senior center, not just from what I get from through Christ Cupboards, how it was set up. I've added to that program with multiple schools and the grocery bags. I'm not going to ask for permission to drop the bags off. I'm just going to do it for some sort of spite for people to not get the help they need because there's some sort of back-and-forth between administration. That's ridiculous. So, I'm not going to ask for permission. I'm not going to beg for forgiveness. I'll drop bags off. If you don't want to give them out, don't give them out. If you want to say no to this, say no to this. I'm not, I'm done asking, all right? I'm not here asking for any special things. This was brought up by you people. I asked in March and gave up on it. I thank you for sticking with and called me on this. You've never talked to me, so how you could propose something, I have no idea.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn?
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I know it's been on the news quite a bit about the salt shortage, wondering if we know where Brooklyn stands, if we have a good amount or not. And if we are low, are they going to cut back on salting all the side streets and just do the intersections coming up to the side street and, you know, things like that? So, at last, so I was talking to a friend that has someone who works down in the mine and they've been trying to stop the leak for several months now. So, where that really stands, don't know, but it's something going on. And something not to do with that, but the metric system. You know, use it back and forth at times. We started with it in the country and, you know, to me, I hated it because I'm an old guy, but it functions. I bought a ruler the one time by mistake. It had American and metric on it for doing woodworking. I was helping a friend rebuild a garage. I started measuring wood and started using the metric side because it was so much easier to make a measurement. So, it'd be nice to see if the country went back to it and do the metric system because, you know, it functions and, yeah, we'll get over it. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Ego. And Mr. Verba, if you could address that in your comments.
Can I address it now?
Absolutely.
We have plenty of salt. We are filled, our dome is filled to capacity right now. So, we fill, we met our requirement for last year. We just finished up about two weeks ago. So, we are, we have plenty of salt, so we'll be salt like crazy.
All right, anyone else in the public having anything to say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn? Okay, very good. We'll now move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards, and we'll begin this evening with the finance committee. We did meet this evening at 6:30, just prior to our regularly scheduled council meeting as we do for all meetings. I'm going to go over items that we're going to vote on this evening and items that are new to the agenda. The first item is ordinance 2018-30. This is authorizing the mayor to enter into a shared services agreement between the city of Brooklyn and the city of Parma Heights for the position of animal control officer. What this ordinance does, it allows for an animal control officer to be shared between the two cities. The ACO would be an employee of Brooklyn and Parma Heights would essentially pay for half of the compensation and the benefits for the ACO, as well as any expenses directly attributed to Parma Heights. All other expenses included would be billed 50/50. And the hours of service to each city will be determined in conjunction with both of the administrations of both those cities. Up on third reading this evening is ordinance 2018-84, declaring the improvement of certain real property to be a public purpose pursuant to revised code section 5709.40B. And it's very lengthy. I'm not going to read the entire ordinance until we go to vote on it. But this ordinance deals with the TIF financing for the capital improvements that are being done at the old AG property. And this ordinance provides notification to the Brooklyn City schools and also in regards to the Platts over at that property. Again, this is a housekeeping item for the TIF agreement for the American Greens property. An ordinance 2018-85 is on second reading, but we do hope to pass by suspension this evening, and that is approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the Community Reinvestment Area Tax Agreement with Cleveland American LLC Holdings, Cleveland American LLC and Medical Mutual of Ohio at a cost of $23 million. And this is a sister ordinance to 2018-84. It has to do with the TIF financing and again, for notification of the schools. And we are passing these by emergency this evening because this is the final meeting of 2018. Right, ordinance 2018-86, this will actually need to be amended and we will amend this whenever we go to, we get to this legislation, but this is the amended annual appropriations for this year. The total amount of the appropriation change is $4,027,630. The vast majority of this is an increase in the transfer of funds from the landfill closure fund of $840,000 and the Tideman Interchange Fund of $1,320,000 to the general fund, does not actually involve dollars being spent, rather just transferring from funds to the general fund. This also includes the purchase of the new garbage truck. There's an additional $80,000 expended for salt, right, as we just talked about for our roads. And there, these adjustments have been made and are based upon the CBA increase, and our payroll increase is based upon the CBA increase. Mr. Ragus explained this at the last council meeting, and so if there are any questions he can address those, any more concerns you want to add to it, you can in your report.
Sure.
All right, ordinance 2018-87, again, second reading, we hope to pass by adoption. This is the amended, or the annual appropriations for 2019. The total general fund expenditure is being budgeted for next year is $15,462,875. Ordinance 2018-89, again, second reading, I hope to pass by emergency this evening, is the capital improvement plan for 2019. The total proposed capital budget for 2019 is $4,601,310. This includes $2.1 million that will be expended using TIF financing, that's over at the old AG property, $1,878,000 from the capital improvements fund, $22,500 from grants, $530,000 from the strip fund, and $70,000 from the motor vehicle license fund. Ordinance 2018-90, again, on second reading, hope to pass by emergency. This is to authorize the updated capital improvement plan for 2018, the items that we had not originally budgeted for, but we did end up purchasing in 2018. $295,670 of that was for a new garbage truck that we were anticipating buying next year, but we were able to get a good deal on it this year, so we bought it this year. Other items include $20,000 for emergency engine replacement, $75,000 for battery backup system at our stoplights, $42,700 for an LED light conversion, $18,000 for a wall sign at Tideman and Bit Off, and then $197,000 dealing with the roadway construction over at the old American Greens property, and that is a part of the TIF financing. And then, ordinance 2018-91, this is on first reading this evening, but we do again, hope to pass by emergency. This is amending section F of ordinance 2016-96 relating to fees for ice show participants. The proposed rate for the issue will be as follows. A cost for Learn to Skate members would be $25. Costs for Brooklyn Figure Skating Club members would range from $25 to $60 based upon their level of participation. Skaters would then have their choice of how many routines to skate, between one and three. The cost goes up for each one. $25 for a solo duet only, $40 for a solo duet plus one club group routine, $60 for a solo and duet plus a two-club group routines. And again, Ms. Begin to like to get these passed so that we can have this ready to go for 2019. Right, ordinance 2018-92, establishing Brooklyn Mutual Home Incorporated Community Partner Rates for Membership and Programs at the John M. Quinn Recreation Center and the Nattorian. This is, I want to address a couple of items that were discussed from a couple of residents this evening. This was something that was brought up earlier this spring in regards to the senior center. So, as, and Mr. Butler was asked to look into this. The administration, the mayor sent me an email before our last council meeting saying, "Hey, we need to address an issue." And here was the issue. There were residents that were living in the Brooklyn Acres on the Cleveland side that were getting the Brooklyn rates in at the recreation center. And I guess this has been going on for a long, long time. Well, I don't have a problem necessarily with that, but our law director essentially said, "Look, you're doing this and it's not legal." So, something needs to be addressed to make this change. And so, at the last finance meeting, I discussed this ordinance with my fellow members of council and discussed changing them and making the Brooklyn Acres community partners, meaning they would receive the community partner rates that our sister cities, Parma, Parma Heights, and Lindell receives. That is all that my ordinance was supposed to do. It was just to correct something that was being done inappropriately and had been going on for quite some time, to correct that. Now, that is ordinance 2018-92. Ordinance 2018-93 goes above and beyond that and adds some different things in there, dealing with the senior center and also includes this as well, and actually the Brooklyn resident rates. And that's an ordinance that Mrs. Pucci proposed, and I'll let her explain that whenever she gives her report. But as far as 2018-92 goes, it was simply to make what we were doing and have been doing for a long time, to make sure that we're covered legally. That was the purpose of it. All right, so, there was really no reason, in my opinion, for any communication outside of that. It's been something that's been going on in the city, from my understanding. I haven't been here for decades, but it's been going on for a long, long time. This was to correct it, to make sure that we are legally covered. Mr. Butler, did I assess that correctly as far as the legal ramifications go? I want to make sure I get this correct.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would say, I'm not sure if I ever said this is illegal, using that word, but, no, but I certainly was concerned about it and the fact that it wasn't codified anywhere or enshrined in the law. And so, I was hoping for some legislation at some point.
So, the fear was it could be challenged in court and we weren't necessarily be covered?
That's the thought. I just always want to make sure that the city record reflects the practices that we're undertaking.
So, essentially, as I ordered it, a housekeeping item to make sure that continued past practices are now, to use my word, legal and won't be, and is now no longer challengeable.
That's certainly accurate, from my recollection.
Thank you. All right, as far as 2018-93, I will let Mrs. Pucci address that when she gives her report. All right, well, now move on to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that is Mr. Coulson.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. The Board of Zoning Appeals will be meeting Thursday, December 20th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room, and they will be hearing a request for, this is actually from Russell Yankovitz, for a 289-square-foot variance to reconstruct an 889-square-foot detached garage at 4627 Winter Lane, parcel 43211021. And that completes my report. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Public Safety and Environmental Committee will meet immediately following this council meeting to discuss ordinance 2018-88, and this ordinance is regard to updating our code regarding animals. I will now move on with the Recreation Board. Councilman Tansky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Next Recreation Board meeting will be held on December 17th in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The Planning Commission met this past Thursday, and we heard two requests. One was a request from Ernesto Hudson for two wall signs for Beam Me Up Detail Wash at 7323 Clinton Road. This request was unanimously approved. A request was also given from Patricia Napoli for a banner sign for N.O. Kane's baseball complex for six months at 8707 Memphis Avenue. This request was unanimously rejected. No one came to the meeting on their behalf. And then the next Planning Commission meeting will take place on Thursday, January 3rd, at 6:00 p.m. in the City Hall Conference Room, and all are welcome to attend. We'll now move on with our reports of council. We'll begin this evening with Ms. Meg Ryan-Schott.
Thank you, President Van Kirk. Last week, I had the pleasure of sitting on a panel by Ready to Run, a nonpartisan training program by the John Glenn College at OSU for women to run for office. Last year, myself and Mary Bell Beer attended their first training opportunity in the Cleveland area. Their mission is to empower women to run for office at all levels and to gain the tools and knowledge to do so. Last week, I sat on the alumni panel of this Ready to Run program and talked to a crowd of nearly 100 women who are interested in running for or advocating for public office throughout Ohio. It was so energizing and exciting to be there. Giving back and helping others who have thoughts of running for office is one of the best parts of this job. Earlier today, or just before this meeting, I attended the finance meeting. I was glad to hear the changes in the language to ordinance 2018-92 for the Brooklyn Mutual Homes to become a community partner and obtain the community partner rates that other municipalities, including most recently Lindale, receive. Having a wider base of residents receive the community partner rates at a rec center will open opportunity for greater use without a direct cost to our residents. While I welcome community partners with our city, I do believe that we also have to keep Brooklyn competitive for people to want to move here. Last but not least, I hope everyone has a good, warm, and safe holiday season. See you all in 2019. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes?
Somebody's parked in front of the old fire base. I'd recommend moving your vehicle before we got to push it out of the way. But we got a SWAT team call out, and they need to get those vehicles out of the way. It's a white Honda, FCJ 7297. Anybody? White Honda?
I think they went out.
Okay.
I think you went over.
All right.
Got it? It's a big vehicle in there. I think they'll have no problem. Thank you, Chief. All right, next up is Mr. Sullards.
Thank you. Friends at Brooklyn Library is holding a 10-cent paperback sale that started December 1st. It's going through to end of the month. If you like watching sporting events and have some free time, please check out the Brooklyn High School hockey team. There is a team this year. For a while, it seemed that after the graduating classes the last few years, it might be a little lean. Through this past Thursday's game, they were 4-0. Games are played at the John Cohen Recreation Center across the street. Cost for students and seniors is $4. All others are $6. Congratulations to Seth Majowski on his 100th win as a wrestler for Brooklyn High School by taking first place in his weight class at 132 pounds at Avon Lake Tournament on December 2nd. Also on the tournament, Carl Ramsor came in third in his weight class. Brooklyn High School Music Department will be holding their Christmas program this Saturday, December 15th, with the third graders performing at noon, fifth and sixth graders at 2:00 p.m., seventh and eighth graders at 4:30 p.m., and the high school grades nine, nine through 12 at 7:00 p.m. There is a very, very good chance that you'll see Mary Copeland at this event. Really? Now, speaking about Mary, sincere congratulations to you. For the number of years that I've known you, seems to you just everywhere. You could be doing senior lunches at the high school, music boosters, athletic boosters, parent teacher association stuff, supporting various school issues, working on musicals, just about anywhere. And you always have a smile on your face and greet people no matter what. Oh, and if you have tears, and there have been those moments, well, those tears are real and there may be some sadness in them because this or that may have been or be the last event for Megan or Norman, but there are more tears of joy hanging in through them, through their lives. Proud to know you, friend. And as Meg, as Meg said, Merry Christmas to everybody. Have a Happy New Year and see you in 2019.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I'd like to congratulate Marie Knapp, our Employee of the Year. Congratulate you and thank you for your service and dedication to the city of Brooklyn, and we're very happy that you're part of our employee family. I too would like to congratulate Mary Copeland, who is also my friend, because Mary is a friend to everybody. And Mary and I actually first met in early childhood PTA. Because of the ages of our children, I, she was just coming in when I was just moving on. And as Mr. Seltzer mentioned, Mary volunteers everywhere, all over the city, for various groups and organizations, and she always does it with a smile. So I'm very proud to know her and sincerely congratulate her on this wonderful honor. I would also like to thank everyone who spoke during the public session. Just a couple of quick things regarding the appropriation for, the appropriations ordinance we have on our docket this evening. I'm certainly not going to vote against it, but I do disagree with transferring the funds from our landfill fund to the general fund. We established that for the post-closure costs many years ago. I know that we're able to do this transfer. However, I believe we should keep these funds separately. And I really haven't been given any reason why this is either necessary or advisable. So I just wanted to get that on the record. I also want to clear up a rumor relating to proposed bonuses for employees. I had a call from a resident who said they heard that there was a proposed bonus and that myself and Mary Bell Beer kind of put the kibosh on it. So there was something brought up by the administration at a budget work session, and honestly, Mrs. Bell Beer wasn't even at that meeting. And we discussed it at two different points during the meeting. However, of the council people who were there, there wasn't anyone who spoke in favor of it. So if anybody, you know, wants to know my views or the position I've taken or took on that discussion, please contact me. I'm more than happy to discuss it. Regarding ordinance 2018-93 relating to Brooklyn Acres, it was mentioned in the finance committee and also a little bit here, that basically this came to our attention back in the spring when we instituted the swipe card system at the senior center. And residents get this for no charge and non-residents get this, I believe it's $12. So that's how it first came to our attention. The mayor brought it to our attention, that, you know, basically she received some sort of inquiry or question. I believe it was from Mr. Slattery or from someone at Brooklyn Acres. So that led to the discussion about the rec center because as it's been stated, for many, many years, the Cleveland side of Brooklyn Acres, they were able to come to our rec center and participate at resident rates. It's a very unique situation because the housing development is partially in Brooklyn and partially in Cleveland. So Mr. Butler said if this is something we're going to, first, he needed to research it to see if we were going to be able to continue it. And if it was some, excuse me, something we were able to continue, we were going to have to memorialize it so that it was official. I did ask Mr. Butler to conduct some research and give his legal opinion, which he did provide just before the Thanksgiving holiday. So basically, in ordinance 2018-93, I do have a couple tweaks to it, which I'll mention when it's on the agenda so that we can amend it, that basically, if it passes, non, or excuse me, Cleveland residents of Brooklyn Acres would be able to go to the rec center to continue, to be able to go under resident rates, and we would not charge the Brooklyn acre residents for the swipe card at the senior center. That's kind of it in a nutshell. Brooklyn Acres is an important integral part of our community, and they have been for many years. I'm not saying that there aren't other organizations that also provide, you know, do good works in the city of Brooklyn, so to speak. So I think how we left it in the finance committee is that if someone wants us to consider even a more broad community partnership situation with residents of Cleveland, that certainly, you know, maybe that's something we could consider. Finally, as it has been stated, this is our last meeting of the year, which is a little bit unusual for us to wrap things up this early. Our regular meeting would have fallen on Christmas Eve, and what we did last year in preparation for our 2018 calendar was we put ourselves down for the 17th for a final meeting if it was necessary. Usually, there's always financial things that we need to tie up at the end of the year. So I'd like to thank Mr. Ragus for being able to wrap everything up for tonight. And another thing I wanted to mention is the holiday season can be very difficult for those who have lost loved ones, especially if that loss is very recent. And Mayor, you and your family will be in my prayers over the holiday season. I would like to wish our employees, administration, all your families, and all our residents a very merry and joyous Christmas. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate Marie Knapp for being awarded Play of the Year. I also want to congratulate, congratulate Mary Copeland for being awarded Brooklyn Citizen of the Year. I know Mary for a good period of time. She's a very hard worker, gives a lot of her time to the students of Brooklyn. Again, Mary, a big thank you. I want to wish all the residents and their families a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, you. Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Plitzky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I'd also like to congratulate Marie Knapp, our police lady. And Mary, I've only known you a little while since being the legislative person for the schools, but I see you there all the time, smiling and doing everything for everybody. So keep up the good work. Thank you. As 2018 draws to a close, many changes have occurred. Sadly, some of us had lost, have lost relatives and friends. The support of residents, friends, and clergy have made difficult times a little bit easier. It's also a time to be thankful for things we take for granted, our police and fire, service department, and all city employees who helped to make Brooklyn the place I have loved to be a part of for over 50 years. Thanks to all these dedicated people who look at their employment as more than a job. During my few years in office, any requests and concerns that I get from residents are quickly addressed and resolved by city employees. Senior citizens tell me how much they appreciate lunches and activities provided by our senior center. The recreation center, by offering several fitness options that help all of us, including me, stay healthy. As a longtime choir member at former Corpus Christi Church, I love to sing Christmas carols when I still had a voice. Now, I just appreciate those who can still sing. This coming Saturday, December 15th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m., Cleveland Baptist Church will hold their Christmas concert at the church and will repeat the performance on Sunday, December 16th, at 6:00 p.m. also. As with past concerts, I'm sure you will enjoy them as much as I have. So as Christmas approaches, I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, remembering that Jesus is the reason for the season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Plitzky. Just a couple of things. Again, I've talked a lot tonight in the committee meetings. I do want to thank Dawn for coming up tonight, and I appreciate you getting through that. As far as the issue you have with 92, I appreciate you putting it up here, but it has been rectified, and so that was changed. The wording was a bit ambiguous in the ordinance, and we'll read that into the record here in a second. As far as the issue 93, I have no problem discussing this, this issue further, as I mentioned to Mrs. Pucci when I called her today and spoke to her. The reason 92 was put on is because, again, as I mentioned, it is to correct something that has been inappropriate that's been going on in Brooklyn for a long time. That's the purpose of it. That was the reason why it was put on. All right, issue 93 addresses something that has not been past practice. It is new to the city of Brooklyn. And so that is why they're really, although they can be looked as competing ordinances, they're really not the same thing. 92 corrects something that, from a legal standpoint, 93 goes above and beyond and adds something, adds something to that. As far as what Mr. Edo said about the metric system, I would challenge you to do research on why it is that we use the English system and not the metric system. I think you'll find the study very interesting. And I'm in favor of staying with the English system, just to make a note. All right, I do want to thank Mrs. Plitzky for talking about the Christmas in Brooklyn program that takes place at our church this year. I think this is the, either the fifth or the sixth year that we've done this, and so you're welcome to come. It's a great time. It's free. We'll have free refreshments afterwards, and so it'll, it'll be, it'll take place at 6:00 and I promise you will not hear me sing, all right, which is a good thing because I direct, I don't sing. Right, but so I do want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. I hope everyone has a blessed start to 2019, and we will see you when the new year comes around. With that, we'll move on with the mayor.
Thank you, Council President Van Kirk. Once again, I want to congratulate Marie and Mary. You know, both women are definitely deserving of that award, and I think you can all see that from tonight's presentations. I also want to express my sympathies to Councilwoman Plitzky on the loss of your brother. I'm sorry to hear about that. It's just a tough time to lose anybody. I also want to congratulate Patrick Ryan. I swore him in last week as one of our new firefighters. Pat has been a volunteer firefighter here in Brooklyn for a couple of years now. He's also a Brooklyn resident. So he scored high on the testing, and we're lucky to have him and bring him in full-time here. And I think that we're getting in a good place in our fire department where firefighters aren't getting pushed to a lot of overtime, so they're happy about that. We've implemented a board control review, modified it at the last council meeting. Mr. Verba and I are the only members on that board. We meet the first and third Wednesday of each month if necessary. Everything is out there on the city's website now. My assistant Jill Ludwig took care of that. So as we meet for these meetings, you'll see an uploaded agenda. Any expenditure over $5,000 compliant with the ORC, and then any minutes to follow up. So you can review that on the city's website under committees and commissions and click on that anytime. And I would review that into the record, but it is a lot of expenditure since, you know, on average, Cindy spends about $42,000 each day. So as you can imagine, it would be a lot to review every month. Also, I wanted to speak on the landfill transfer. I understand Mrs. Pucci's concerns on that. I think Mr. Ragus has talked about this in depth at the budget meetings. One, one thing that I think he hasn't mentioned though, and I would, you know, be remiss if I didn't mention it to the record since it's been brought up. One of the issues we've had with our audit is every time that we make a payment on the needed transfer, a landfill transfers, for every expenditure we make, we have the EPA come out to make sure we're compliant as part of the post-closure procedure, which we'll have to do for the next 30 years, is that we have to wire transfer that money from one fund to another. And that is actually a substantial cost to transfer that money from one fund to another. So each expenditure, if we have to pay that fee on every time, that just keeps on increasing. And, you know, so there's savings there by keeping in the fund. So we spend a little bit less than $100,000 per year, and we foresee that expenditure for the next 28 years. And we've, we've all known about that. And as Mr. Ragus said, we will be modifying some of those expenditures to meet some of our other higher demands such as workers' comp. As far as the employee bonuses, I wasn't going to talk about this either. I would have brought it up at the last meeting, but since it, it got brought up, you know, it's Christmas time. You know, I am so thankful that our employees sat down at the table the last time we were able to negotiate four years, a one-year contract and a three-year contract. At the time, we had, we were in dire straits. Things weren't going well. The fact that we were able to sit down with our law director, our finance director, and myself and negotiate a four-year contract, saving substantial amount of monies with attorneys going forward. And our employees took a 0% for that first year, and they were 0% last year. You know, I'm thankful for them understanding as we go through the financials with them. And as things turn around and Medical Mutual sign on, and you see other businesses sign on to the American Greetings property, things are really turning around here in the city. And although next year isn't going to be, you know, perfect, we see that light at the end of the tunnel. And for us in the city just to keep on telling our employees, we can't, we can't, we can't. We want you to keep doing more with less at all times, even though we have a good amount of money in the bank. You know, I think that it's, it's sort of disintenuous sometimes, and I think for the sake of the morale of our employees. I mean, you hear this all the time here. You get a resident come up, thank you to our police and fire, they did such an amazing job. You know, they worked really hard. Thanks to our service department for going out in the middle of the night, plowing our cell. But, you know, that's, you know, that's time away. But, you know, that's time away from their family. That's what they're called to do, they're public servants. But, you know, we want to make sure our employees are happy. We want to make sure they continue to work here in the city of Brooklyn. Our police and our fire are on the lowest paid of the list in the county, and I recognize that. And we want to continue to make sure the morale is boosted with our employees to make sure that they're always reminded of why they're doing what they're doing and giving quality service. So I was disappointed in the decision by city council. Ultimately, you know, I don't think everybody was in agreement with that, but some are, and for various reasons, and if they want to talk about it, they can. But in the end, the decision was made. So. And the last subject matter was this, the Brooklyn Acres, which I'm sort of out of the loop. As people said this got brought up with the senior cards at the beginning of the year, I'm not in favor of giving discounted rates for the senior card. It's a really limited amount, $12 a year, and it also includes a newsletter that they were already paying cash for. So it's just a small chunk, and I think that we're not in a position in the city all the time to just keep extending it. We're a small city. We only have so much revenue coming in from the businesses in the city. And I think that, I understand where there's precedent already set, but I would hate to continue to open up the doors to more and more services to people that aren't living here in the city, paying those taxes. So again, I think that we should offer the community partnership rates at our rec center as we only have less than 10% of our own residents using that facility. We have to continue to bring in and produce revenues there, but that's not the case in our senior center. As well as, we have a lot of volunteers over there, and not all of our volunteers are Brooklyn residents, and we're not even offering it to those volunteers. So I think that if we're going to address that issue, you know, that's where you should be addressing it, those people that are taking time and helping keep that center afloat is where we would be directing that. As far as like the insinuation of this administration has some kind of feud with the Brooklyn Acres or Mr. Slattery in particular, I'd like to address that, because I don't know, you know, sitting here for three years, I haven't. But, you know, I sort of feel compelled to do that. And Mr. Slattery's beef is, I don't think is with me. I think he's made that clear. It's with my father, who's dead now, so hopefully that has ended. He had an issue with my father because my father was his boss and disciplined him for something. And so I didn't know Mr. Slattery the day I started this job. I did know he public records requested my old employment files. He put a lot of bad things about my family on social media, tried to do it about myself. I don't hold a grudge for that. It's over. I have no issues with you. I hope you and your family have a terrific Christmas, and I don't want that thing to be used as an excuse for the administration making a legal decision. So, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on with the directors' report. We begin this evening with our finance director, Mr. Regus.
Good evening, the council. Just real briefly, as we wind down 2018, I sent the November 2018 financial report. No surprises. Everything has been consistent with prior months. On the 14th, which is Friday, I will receive our final distribution from Rita for this fiscal year, so I'll have a better understanding of where our income taxes will come in at the end of the year, which comprises over 70% of our general fund revenue. And that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Next up is our fire chief, Chief Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Good evening, everyone. The Brooklyn Fire Department, in conjunction with our Med Control Fire Department partners from UH Parma, will be taking part and stuff the squad. Help us help others by filling our ambulants on Saturday, December 15, at the Brooklyn Walmart from 09 to 1200 hours with non-perishable food items that we will donate to a local food bank. We will also be accepting new toys for Toys for Tots sponsored by the United States Marine Corps. Items may be dropped off at the fire station Thursday, December 13, and Friday, December 14. Also, just a few fire tips for the holidays. Please keep your live Christmas trees watered. Do not overload your electric power strips and outlets. Do not leave candles unattended. Please do not leave your cooking unattended. As always, make sure your batteries are working in your smoke detectors. And finally, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all I got. Thank you.
And Chief, could you say the time one more time for the 15th?
From 09:00 to 12:00 hours.
One more time?
09:00 to 12:00 hours.
Nine in the morning, please.
Nine AM.
Sorry. Never in the military. Sorry, I never read that time. Nine to noon.
On Saturday, the 15th.
All 15.
Yes, and they can, folks can drop items off at the fire station on Thursday and Friday if they would like to do that as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, and then last of this evening is our police chief, Chief Mulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. This is your final reminder about Santa Claus's visit this weekend from the Brooklyn Police Auxiliaries. Saturday, Santa Claus will start his day at noon. He'll be visiting the houses that are south of Bidoff, east of Ridge, in the Brooklyn Acres. On Sunday, he starts again at noon, and he'll be visiting all the houses north of Bidoff in Memphis. So keep an eye out for him, listen for the music. Police cars will be up and down the street announcing his arrival. We'll be, Brooklyn Police Department will be participating in a Brooklyn shop with the cop this Saturday at the Brooklyn Walmart at about 8:00 in that morning. So if you're dropping off a toy, you can wave to one of our officers escorting one of the Brooklyn students around. And we'll be doing that all morning long. So the Brooklyn Police Department would like to wish you a healthy and safe holiday season, especially the safe part. So, thanks.
And one question, a concerned citizen on Bidoff would like to know when Bidoff is going to have Santa Claus. You said north and south of Bidoff, but when is Bidoff actually going to be done? Just from a concerned citizen.
I would have to check with one of those alums and find out exactly.
North side.
I live on the north side.
The Sunday.
Okay, so it'll be on the side. All right, so you split Bidoff as well.
That's the head elf.
Thank you, head elf. I appreciate that. Very good. Okay, well, now move on with legislation. And we begin this evening with ordinance 2018-80. This is up for third reading and adoption, authorizing the mayor to enter into a shared services agreement between the city of Brooklyn and the city of Parma Heights for the position of animal control officer. Any comments or questions?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
To adopt. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-84 is up for third reading and adoption, declaring the improvement of certain real property to be a public purpose pursuant to revised code Section 5709.40B, declaring such improvement to be exempt from real property taxation, designating public infrastructure improvements to be made that will directly benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, designating a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments, authorizing compensation payments to the Brooklyn City School District and Polaris Career Center in repealing a prior inconsistent ordinance. Any comments or questions?
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-85, we hope to pass by suspension this evening, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the community reinvestment area tax agreement with Cleveland American LLC Holdings, Cleveland American LLC, and Medical Mutual of Ohio at the estimated cost of $23 million. Comments or questions?
Introduced by, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-86 is up for second reading and hope to pass by suspension of the rules this evening. The amended annual appropriations. We do need to amend this this evening. I received an email from Mr. Regus. There was a minor change to the amended 2018 appropriation ordinance. The change was in the Economic Development Fund. The final amended amount increased from $794,000 to 1.144 million, and it was simply an oversight on the first ordinance, and they caught it on the final review. There were actually no changes with the fund itself. Everything else in the ordinance is consistent as it was written.
Introduce by, suspend the rules. Second.
We have to make a motion to amend.
Sorry. Motion to.
Second.
To amend. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Introduce by, suspend the rules as amended.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-87, again, is on second reading. We hope to pass by suspension this evening. This is the annual appropriations for 2019. Any comments or questions?
Introduce by, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
To adopt. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-88 is on second reading, amending Chapter 505 of the codified ordinance of the city of Brooklyn to update the code regarding animals. And again, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, the Public Safety and Environmental Committee will meet immediately following this meeting to discuss this ordinance. Ordinance 2018-89 is on second reading. We hope to pass by suspension. This is authorizing the capital improvement plan for 2019. Any comments or questions?
Introduced by, suspend the rules. Second.
To suspend the rules. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-90 is on second reading. We hope to pass by suspension this evening. This is authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for the year 2018. Comments or questions?
Introduce by, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Under new business this evening, ordinance 2018-91 is on first reading, but we do hope to pass by suspension of the rules this evening. This is amending Section F of ordinance 2016-96 relating to fees for the ice show participant rates. Any comments or questions? Introduced by, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
To adopt. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politsky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-92, I'm going to go ahead and read the changes into the amendment that we can vote on, on the changes, amending the ordinance. Underneath Section 1, it will now read that "In keeping with the city of Brooklyn's past practice, all Cleveland residents of Brooklyn Mutual Homes Incorporated are invited to become a Brooklyn Mutual Homes community partner member with all benefits and costs associated with it and existing community partner rates at the John M. Coyne Recreation Center and Auditorium." All right, I'll make the motion, let me amend.
May I be recognized?
Sure.
I'm just wondering if that's actually accurate, because the past practice was they got the resident rate. So I don't know if Mr. Butler wants to weigh in on that or not.
I can make an amendment that'll take care of that.
I hate to interrupt, but the name is not correct. It's Brooklyn Acres Mutual Home.
Mr. Butler.
Acres Mutual Homes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know, to be perfectly frank with you, what exactly the past practice was, other than that the Acres Cleveland residents were getting some sort of benefit.
What is put on first reading and worry about the amendment next time?
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mrs. Pucci. All right, and then on first reading this evening is, did I read it? All right, let me read into the record for first reading. Establishing Brooklyn Mutual Homes Incorporated community partner rates for membership and programs at the John M. Coyne Recreation Center and Auditorium.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I'd like to read my amendments, and if...
Absolutely. I was going to refer to you anyway. So absolutely, right ahead.
Okay. So the first is establishing Brooklyn Acres Mutual Homes. And then in the, in the fourth, whereas, after the word facilities, we should insert, and also in certain cases, allow resident groups to use their facilities, and then it would continue where it already says free of charge. And then in the fifth, whereas, after encounter who need assistance, comma, insert, have also provided non-perishable food to participants at the Brooklyn Senior Center. And then in Section 2, after the word, where it says privileges and costs, insert, for the member swipe card, and then it would continue on as Brooklyn residents at the Senior Center. So I make that motion that we make those amendments. And also wherever it says Brooklyn Mutual Homes, that it's be changed to Brooklyn Acre Mutual Homes.
Second.
To amend. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Plitzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to read 2018-94 into the record, then I'm going to turn it over to the mayor. Since this does not pertain to Finance Committee, it was not discussed by myself. This is English, she wants to offer a little bit about this. Ordinance 2018-94, enacting chapter 729 tobacco product vendors, sales to persons under age 21 of the codified ordinance of the city of Brooklyn, and amending conflicting ordinances. Mayor.
This ordinance would simply make it a local rule to amend the selling age of tobacco from 18 to 21 in the city of Brooklyn. This is initiative taken on by the Board of Health, so I'd like to read some things, and I'd like to ask if we could refer this to the Safety Committee for the January meeting.